Number four, Woodbury, Village Woodbury Planning Board meeting. Everybody please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, limited to justice for all.
Okay. First order of business, has the board had a chance to read the minutes as provided?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Don't make a motion.
Can I get a second? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Just before we go on to the first applicant tonight, it's just a general reminder to all applicants, whether they're here or not tonight, is the timely delivery of reports to this board and the building department. Typically, we request things in ten to fourteen days prior to the meeting so that our consultants in this board have the proper amount of time to prepare and review documents. We were hit with a slew of paperwork this afternoon, kind of in the eleventh hour. Nobody's had a chance to review that yet. Our consultants have not had a chance to review that yet, and the members of the board have not a chance to review that yet. So while the paperwork was submitted today, it will be given and it will be treated as it was given to the building department tomorrow, so that it can be distributed to the members of the boards and the consultants for proper review and comments. With that said, first on the agenda tonight, congregation of Shalom, the Highland Mills, review revised plans and other materials submitted for a proposed conversion of a portion of an existing single-family dwelling to a shul with site improvements. Said property is located at 230 Scotty Monk Road in Highland Mills and is known as the Village of Woodbury, tax map section two-four-seven, block three, lot four. Good evening. No good?
Yes.
Yeah, he's getting a red light. That's a good way to start.
Good evening, everyone. John Queenen from Lincoln Telly Engineering, engineer for the applicant. Also here with me tonight is Mr. Joel Mann, the applicant's representative. We're back before you with a proposal to convert an existing dwelling located at 230 Scotty Monk Road at the intersection of Scotty Monk and Owens Drive to a synagogue shul and mikvah facility. We've been before the board several times. The last time, I think it was, off the top of my head, maybe May of this year, where we had some in-depth discussions regarding the application, and there was a request made by the board to complete a traffic, let's say, study, analysis of the area for this project. The traffic analysis was completed by the applicant, by Tim Miller, that was submitted for the board's review. I'll just highlight some of the main points from that. The traffic consultant analyzed the driveway, the site distances, the speeds on Scotty Monk Road in the area of the project, as well as pedestrian movements for the shul at certain times of the day. Basically, the basic recommendations that had come from that were, the first one is that we should not have any parking along the frontage on Scotty Monk Road, so we have incorporated that into the plans, that there'll be no parking signs allowed along the frontage of the entire property. Number two was an additional pedestrian path from the main entrance out to Scotty Monk Road at the intersection just before the stop sign, in order to have some pedestrians come up this way rather than go all the way around and up the driveway. So we did add that sidewalk piece to that location as well. And then there was a third component that discussed potential land banking of parking. And I'll defer to, you know, our consultant as well as yours on that. There was a few options that were discussed, potentially, you know, we have twenty-four parking spaces. That meets the code for the number of congregants that we're going to have. But there was some discussion on whether or not, you know, we need all twenty-four, and if it would be possible to land bank some of those spaces. We've proven that we can get them, but not actually construct them. And I guess that would, in turn, change some of the waiver requests that we would. It would lower the development coverage waiver request a bit, and it would also potentially change some of the landscaping options that we would have on the site. So that's something we'd like to go over with you tonight. Some of the other minor changes we've done were to address the consultant's comments throughout, fix the grades on the parking lot, did some manipulations to the landscaping plan to accommodate for some drainage piping, as well as increase the site distance there. We also did submit, the applicant's council did submit a report supporting the religious burden for the waiver requests for lot area and for the development coverage. That's where we are today.
Okay. I'm going to just go to my consultants first, and then we'll go back and forth. Sure. Mr. Collins? Seeing you're on the, we'll work down the line.
Good evening. We have reviewed the information that was previously submitted, including a transportation study prepared by Tim Miller and Associates. There's a memo given to the board, and I'll just go through the various highlights. The first highlight is the fact is that we concur that there should be a request made for no parking along the site's frontage because of the pedestrian traffic, as well as traffic approaching the intersection. Second conclusion is the fact is that the traffic generated by the conversion would not overburden the roadway system or cause an impact on the intersection with Owens. However, we would recommend that at the driveway, a turning track for an emergency vehicle be looked at to make sure they can make the turn in, and any adjustments made to the radii. The transportation study went into what is called the eighty-fifth percentile speed to make sure that the site distances are adequate. The eighty-fifth percentile speed is normally the design standard. That turned out to be based upon the data of just at or below thirty miles an hour. The site distances are in accordance with the New York State DOT requirements. They're listed on Plan Sheet One, and the site distances are, the required site distance in various directions are met. With respect to the proposed land banking, we agree that the twenty-four spaces may not be needed. We differ to some extent where, and we've recommended that the board discuss where the land banking should occur. We're recommending that it be at the entrance driveway, and it's a small sketch highlighted, because that would reduce the potential back-up onto the public street because of vehicles coming in and out, and be a clean direction. So the location of the bank parking should be evaluated by the board. There are pros and cons. There are landscaping features that are affected. I'm looking at it from a purely traffic standpoint. And lastly, with respect to the pedestrian traffic, we concur that the path should be built, that the driveway can also be used as an access point. However, even though religious entities are exempt from ADA standards, some of those designs do not meet current standards, and we just recommend that they get as close to those standards as possible, even though that there is no requirement, that they are exempt from the ADA requirements. And that's basically the summary. In general, from a traffic standpoint, there's no impact. From a safety standpoint, site distances are available. The removal of parking is an added benefit. We look at what should be the turning radii for the emergency vehicles. We ask the applicant to indicate whether or not they anticipate any buses now or in the future. If so, we have to design for it, and those are more detailed questions with respect to it. That's my summary of my report.
Quick question with the no parking section. That's a village road.
It would have to be a request to the village to allow for the installation of those signs along the frontage. That's normal. So the board, the applicant could request, the board could concur with that request, or recommend that the village board consider it, and then the applicant will put the signs up if the village board decides to do it.
Now, Rick, that could potentially be a condition of approval, right?
John, would that be on both sides of the street?
No, it only has to be across the site frontage, because that's where the movement's going to occur, and I don't want to affect the neighbors on the other side. But this would only affect the conversion, the shul and the mikvah. And it's where I want to make sure I have clean lines of sight for vehicles coming in and out. I don't want all of a sudden a camper parked along the roadway, and then it blocks the site distances.
Maybe I'll just have any questions for Mr. Collins? Once, twice. Jonathan?
Thank you.
Hold on. Got to ask, do you have questions?
No, I just go on the record that there will not be any buses at this site.
Okay. We just, we, a question came up because we have received reports from neighbors that there have been small buses dropping children's stuff off in front of the house, so.
I can check on that, but the use of the shul is not for a school, just strictly a shul use, and there's no busing to it. Basically, the fathers are coming with the kids, and that's it.
So there'll be no school, or just shul, mikvah, religious services?
Shul, mikvah, that's it.
Okay.
Regardless of whether or not there is a school, the issue is still, are there going to be buses, busing in people, even not having a school? Because that still raises traffic issues that have to be addressed, because it's a different kind of vehicle than would otherwise be there. So if you're not going to have, if you're going to have buses, we have to analyze it. If you're not going to have buses, then it's going to be a condition of the resolution that you can't have buses. So you have to make that decision now, or not tonight, but you have to make.
Yeah, there's not going to be buses. The use is not, the use of a shul is not going with buses. I can check on that, what happened. I can assume that maybe someone told for the children, "I will wait here on the shul," and they dropped off, coming home from school, they dropped off the children at the shul. That's, might happen, but.
What I'm getting from you is that you're not going to be using buses, so you don't want it analyzed by the board here.
Correct.
So there will be a condition saying no buses. If, in fact, any buses are used, that will be a zoning violation if that occurs. Do you understand that?
I understand that.
Yep.
The way that was just worded, if there are school buses that are dropping off children to parents that are at the shul, they're not buses being used by the shul, but they're using the shul as a destination for drop-off.
My, what this board is approving is this use. If this use involves buses in connection with that use, whether picking up, dropping off.
Even though it has nothing to do with the shul, it's just a destination point because the parents are there. In other words, the kids aren't being dropped off at home because the parent is at the shul.
Well, if the shul is being utilized.
As a drop-off.
As a drop-off.
Okay.
Then that has to be studied.
Okay.
Right? What I'm hearing from the applicant is that they're not going to allow that to occur, and therefore, there will be a condition that there will be no busing, and it'll be a zoning violation if, in fact, busing is used.
My point was that the use of the shul, it's basically, the shul doesn't have any service, bus service, to pick up someone and drop them off at the shul back and forth. The only thing why, why was raised, that there is a possibility, and I can check on that, that sometimes that the parents are there, and on the way home from school, they can drop off the buses, can drop off the kids. If that's something, then I can check on that.
If you're going to do that, then it has to be studied.
I will check on that.
So we need to know from you.
Okay.
If that's going to be allowed, whether or not it just so happens coincidentally that parents are there, or it's part of a curriculum that you have, it really doesn't matter. It's that buses are going to be there, and we have to then analyze the interaction of buses and pedestrian traffic and everything else.
From what I know, shuls and the uses, it probably was a coincidence or something like that, but I will check on that specifically.
But it'll be, what I'm saying is that it will be incumbent upon the owner to go ahead and ensure that that doesn't happen.
I see.
Because if it does happen, it's going to be a violation against that owner for allowing it to happen.
I will get back.
You have the alternative.
I will check, I will.
That it can be studied.
I will check on that, and we'll need to get back to you on that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to step on. Okay.
Jonathan Lockman from NPV Village Planners. We gave you a report dated August 29th, and on the waivers requested for lot area and lot coverage, we'll be deferring to the planning board's attorney, who'll be talking about that. Our comment, too, we agreed with the parking requirements calculation, and also noted, also like the traffic engineer, there are seven banked parking spaces proposed. And if you were inclined to allow the banking of the parking, we would recommend that in the resolution and notes on the plan, talk about the triggering mechanism of how the requirement would be put in place if there were a problem to require those parking spaces to be constructed, so that everyone's on notice that if there's overcrowding and the cars can't fit without the seven spaces, they'll be triggered to install those that are banked. And that, of course, is if you were to allow the banking in the first place. On the landscaping, we looked through the requirements in section twenty-seven of the zoning code on land. I didn't think I was that long-winded that I wore out the microphone, but here we go. That we see that there are street trees that look like they were installed when the subdivision was created, so there's, they meet the street tree requirements. We thought the twenty-five-foot-deep landscaped area and the plantings around the building were adequate and met that standard. On the interior landscaping of parking islands, it's a small parking lot, and there are these sort of peninsulas that break it up, that have plantings proposed, and we felt that met the requirement. They aren't actual islands, they're more like peninsulas, but in a parking lot of that size, I don't think it's really reasonable to put islands in the middle of it. I think this, what they've done, meets the requirement. When Dennis Lindsay's office reviewed, they picked up some standards that we had missed. In section forty-two, three-ten forty-two, and Dennis will probably get to this in a moment, there are supplemental regulations for parking that is adjacent to a residence district. I think it's designed for when a commercial district is butting up against a residence district, and you're supposed to put five-foot hedges up to right along the perimeter. We hadn't, because this is in the, it's a religious use in the middle of a neighborhood, it hadn't occurred to us that this standard really applied, but I guess that's an interpretation question, maybe the other consultants would, I don't help with this where. It's not the case of a commercial district next to a residence district that's going to have a commercial use, it's a religious use that's in a residence district. But if you believe that this section forty-two applies, that Dennis cited, they would need to put in more plantings along the front, along the street. And. Those were our comments.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have any questions for? Do you have any questions? I feel like you're queuing up for.
No.
Rick, if the board does decide to use land banking for parking, I know, what is the trigger? A violation from the building inspector, or the building inspector just deeming? Like, how does that trigger get triggered?
It will depend upon how you word the resolution. So you would determine the trigger. So it could be, and what it typically is, although it's not mandatory to do this way, typically is that if the building inspector believes that there's a problem because of the practical, day-to-day things that he observes, or hears from others, and then goes out and observes, he believes that there needs new parking, you can put in your resolution of approval that if the building inspector determines that some or all of the bank parking needs to be brought to active parking, then it could be done that way. That's probably, the way we've done it in the past, I think probably the most efficient way, rather than coming back to the board or something like that.
Thank you. Dennis?
All right, I'll try not to repeat things that have already been said, but there are some questions about what the board can grant in terms of waivers, and what things would have to be referred to.
It's going to be one of those nights.
I think Rick's prepared to address that, but I will mention some things in your code do provide for some discretion. You have some discretion on the quantity of parking. You know, you've exercised that discretion in the past, on that you're allowed to reduce it up to twenty-five percent, although generally, it says that when your evaluation shows that there are some common uses, but you still have some discretion in terms of the quantity of parking. In terms of landscaping, there was a question on landscaping and buffering and those sorts of things, because they're outside of the table of use in the back of the code, where the religious section is cited in terms of substantial burden. But there is a section there that says that where lot size and shape or existing structure make it infeasible to comply with the requirements for front landscaped area or landscape parking area, the planning board may approve planners, plant boxes or pots containing trees, shrubs, and/or flowers to comply with the intent of these regulations. So it seems as though you have some discretion, as long as you comply with the intent of the regulation. Rick can go through that further. I note that they do have some screening around the lot, and I think that Jonathan's absolutely correct, that was written in case of where you have a commercial use next to a residential use. But I think the intent there may have been that if you're a residential use, you don't want to be looking at a parking lot, and it's trying to screen it. You don't expect that a residential use, and this is going to be religious use, in the middle of a residential area, might have that same impact. And whether you think that you should have those screening hedges, or some similar buffering, I think is within the discretion of the board, and there is that section in the code that would support that. A couple other things that haven't been mentioned, the letter from the attorney on the issue of substantial burden says in one spot, "The walk to 230 Scotty Monk Road is long and dangerous in the winter." And I'm not sure what they were trying to demonstrate with that comment, other than they're putting more people on the road in a dangerous situation. So maybe they want to clarify that situation there. Do you want to jump on that, John?
Whatever you want to do, if you want to.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, what that, what that comment was meant to intend by the attorney is he's meaning from the closest shul, which is in the Village of Kirish Shul, to this site, not from the site into its neighborhood itself. So most, if not all, of the pedestrian traffic is coming from the neighborhood to the site. He's meaning from Scotty Monk all the way out to Seven Springs, and then into Forest. That's the run that he's referring to.
So you're saying that none of those individuals will be walking to this new shul?
No, what we're saying is if the shul wasn't here, they have to walk down Scotty Monk towards, into the Village of KJ, and that is a long, dark stretch of road.
I don't think that that's how it's worded here.
No.
That's what he meant, that's what his meaning is.
Well, I think we're going to need some clarification in writing with respect to that.
He wasn't able to attend tonight, so I'm covering for him, but he'll be at the next meeting to clarify.
Yeah, but if he can make his submission clarifying that, because that's a very important planning board issue, if, in fact, part of what's being requested is going to present a dangerous situation, which is how it's presented in the, in the letter.
Yeah, when I saw Dennis' comment, I read it, and yes, it does appear that way. But it's meant to say that if this isn't here, those congregants have to walk that route farther past.
Okay. And then a related question, which is what I started out with. Are you saying that none of the people in and around that attend that shul now will be walking to this new shul? Because that would be the same dangerous path, I assume.
Which dangerous? The people attending, that will attend this shul, if this isn't here, they have to walk into the village.
Okay, so there are some people that already attend that other shul that they would have to walk to if this didn't exist, right?
I would, I guess.
And according to the attorney's letter, that shul is deficient in providing all of the requisite religious aspects that this new shul will provide, correct?
The letter, the way it's written, it was very, very confusing, between what Rick is saying, and then, it almost sounded like the shul that you're proposing.
Yes.
Is bad, because it's too far away.
Correct. That's how, that's when I read it, that's how I understood it.
So this will be corrected, no?
What he, what he meant, I think what he meant to say was that if this shul isn't here, the next closest shul that they have to go to is bad, walk.
The only person to tell us actually what he meant would be him, so I think.
So on your next re-submission.
So we will, I will have the attorney clarify that statement.
As part of that, and this is what I was getting to, if you look on page four of the attorney's letter, he is trying to build a case for why this shul is necessary, but in doing so, I think he raises issues as to this particular path you're talking about that is considered to be dangerous. It says, "The existing," this is in the second paragraph on page four, "The existing unpermitted shul does not have the requisite facilities for a mikvah. It does not fulfill the congregation's requirement for proper worship activities, so that without access, they're constrained to modify their religious behavior and violate their religious beliefs." What I'm saying is that if that's true, that the unpermitted shul, people that are going there, if they can't properly fulfill their requirements for proper worship activities, wouldn't they want to now not attend that shul and attend this new shul that would then require them to go along this long and dangerous path?
The, I think he's referring to the unpermitted shul as the shul.
Yeah.
This shul.
This shul is.
This is the unpermitted shul.
This is the unpermitted shul.
It's operating as a shul.
Operating now, unpermitted.
Okay.
So what he's saying is.
Yes.
Correct, because they don't, I don't believe there is a mikvah constructed yet at this location. I see where you're, where it gets upside down a little.
All right. So this is currently operating as a shul.
Yes, it has been, it has been sent to the building inspector, the building inspector did send it to court, they did pay a fine, and they were told they have to now come back in front of this board and work, work to correct the violations and make it a legal special, illegal, non-conforming, special permitted use now.
Okay, we had a couple in my comments on lighting and on signs, we just, since they said that they're not going to have any signs, and they're not going to add any additional lighting other than lighting that provides .1 foot candles, we just recommend that that be a condition of your action. You don't want to have too many, too many lights on this, but you do want some safety lighting.
While you're talking about lighting, was there any, did anyone look at the lights that are on the roadway? Because the operating hours of this shul are going to be in the dark at night and in the morning. So what about the?
Well, our roadways in Woodbury, I mean, I've done a lot of lighting in the town. We don't light our roadways to provide necessarily a glow or a light along. Basically, we try to outline the roadways. We provide lights generally at four-hundred-foot spacing and at every turn, any intersections. It's simply to tell motorists where the road is and to try to create a safe environment for motorists. Up in this area, it's not envisioned that there's going to be a lot of foot traffic out there at night, and you'd have to be on the side of the road, you have to have a flashlight or a light stick or something so people can see you, but it's, I have not examined the road for lighting. We can do that, but, oh, we can ask the applicant to do it, but I don't, I don't expect you to find a high lighting.
Or vision, or whatever, I'd like to see where the lighting is.
So just to clarify in the next submittal, that I have the applicant draw out where, where any street lighting. any street lighting currently is within.
Within.
Half mile. I mean, isn't that the foot traffic, is intended to be a half mile?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a big, it's a bigger community than.
I could go up to Van Tassel and go up Scunny Monk from Owens to Van Tassel and then down Desert.
I think, I think that would be, those would be the main, I think those would probably be the main travel ways.
Yes.
That the congregants would be coming.
Correct.
What about from the, I guess, the left of the?
Owens.
Owens, yeah.
I could go down Owens. It's not very much.
Okay.
And we'll give you a vicinity map, we'll put some dots where the.
Yeah, so I think that's all, just so.
Yeah, I just want to see where that is. Sorry, Dan.
That's okay. As far as ARB and Ridge Preservation, I mean, it applies to this site, at least Ridge Preservation does. From what I understood from the application, there's no real changes to the building other than porch maybe changed or something?
There is some cosmetic design. Was, I understand that the board, this was, the chair was referring to that. I was just submitted because I was seeing that in the comments of the consultants, and I understand this will not be reviewed this month, this, at this meeting, but there is submitted an outside design of this building, not changing any heights, but basically redesigning the outside, changing like the material and of the building.
Yes.
Okay, so that is a change from the original application. So there's a change to the facade of the structure.
There is a change to the facade of this, to the finish of the facade of the structure with some features, yes.
Yeah, we'll need a full submission on ARB materials, the ARB form and all of that submitted, because this was reviewed previously. Okay. Okay, well, I think that explains the, the comments from the attorney was that you were going to build a facility, and we didn't think it was going to be building a facility other than site work, but you are building a facade, you're doing interior work, and you're basically redoing the shell.
Correct.
Okay. There are a few other comments in here, hopefully you'll address those next submission. The one thing I have a question on is the handicap. You say that there's no requirement for handicap access? I noticed you have a handicap depressed curb.
Yeah.
But it looks like the grade, that driveway, that walkway is going to be too steep coming up for.
No, we've graded this out, we've provided a switchback ramp to get to the front door.
And in the front area too? It's from the street?
Yeah, because what it is, is we have the handicap, we have the ramp here, come up the sidewalk, and then there's a, there's a switchback ramp here that leads you right to the platform of the main entrance.
I was talking about from the road, from the road, there's a.
Oh, from in here?
Yeah, there's a handicap depressed curb.
We just, we just put the depressed curb in there, just so no one tripped. It's not a handicap accessible route, it's too steep.
So the accessibility is for someone who drives and parks can get in.
Correct.
But someone walking could not get in from handicap accessible. I don't know what the requirement is, quite frankly, I just want to understand what you're providing.
Yeah, it's just too steep to go from here up to the main entrance, and we didn't want, we didn't want to be entering the sidewalk.
Right.
Just to meet that regulation. So that's why we have the two handicap spaces in the back.
Okay, do you know if that satisfies the code?
This does not.
No, I mean, in terms of what's required for religious.
I don't know, I don't know.
Okay, I don't know either.
Yeah.
We'll have to check it, okay.
Can check with the.
Yeah, but I think, I think John did allude that it, or maybe it was Jonathan, that it's not for religious use.
I've read documents that. And I'll provide the information, I've read documents that there are certain, for a religious entity or private clubs are exempt from ADA rules, standards.
Yeah, but even with that point, in fact, according to the building code, if you have an area where someone can come with a car and there's a loading, ADA loading space, and from that area you have ADA ramp to the building, then that should be sufficient to the building code.
You may be absolutely right, I just don't know.
Yeah.
And I want to make sure that we understand that this program is set up, because you may not want to be entering a walkway, but you may have to have it, I'm not sure.
Well, that walkway wasn't meant for the, you know, it's not even, there's no sidewalks on the street, that's meant to grab any pedestrians walking down the street to get them up.
Dennis, would that be something you can confirm with Gary or?
I'll talk to Gary, I'll also talk to John and look at his references too. They have provided handicap parking for someone who drives there, so they have something to go into the facility, I just don't know if, what their obligations are.
Right, just crossing our eyes, dotting our t's, all the way around, but you get what I mean, isn't it?
It does apply that the driveway doesn't meet the requirement.
Well, they have one access, they only have one access from the road, but I don't know.
Either way.
I will, we'll confirm it, we'll go from there.
I just had one question on that. Dennis, you had commented on stormwater management.
Yes.
Anything in particular looking for less than?
The only reason I've requested here, okay, is this is not over an acre of impervious, and it's, you know, it's not an acre of disturbance, however, it's, it's taking a residential lot and using it three and a half times the coverage that's permitted on a lot. We did that for all the lots up there, we'd have any issues. So I was thinking of some kind of stormwater management, maybe if the soils are good, you can put in a leach pit or something along those lines, something to accept water. You could do it with a roof drainage, which would be easy, it'd be clean.
Okay.
Something along those lines.
I wasn't sure if you were meaning, you know, full-blown like little basin or something.
No, I don't think so, because it doesn't fall under our code requirements for that, but I think because of the nature of the use and the, in terms of intensity of the use on a small lot, that we should do something.
Okay. That's all I have.
Does anybody else have any questions for Dennis? Don't you want to talk about?
Oh, I just, I can ask now. I have a lot of questions, but one, when we were talking, when you were talking about the distance to the closest shul, if you, if you do a search on Google Maps.
Yeah, I just did one.
It's showing two other shuls within half a mile, .6 miles away. Those aren't part of your attorney's analysis, so I was wondering.
Which, do you have the, can you give me the names of the?
I am not going to attempt to say them, but I can spell them for you.
Okay.
Or I can give you them.
Use the street, doesn't it?
Okay.
Send the address.
The addresses are, one is the Oktus shul on Oktus Road in Highland Mills, and then the other one is.
Acres Road?
Excuse me?
Acres?
No, Oktus, A-C-H-D-U-S. And that's on Oktus Road in Highland Mills. And then there's one at 364 Ridge Road, and it's K-H-A-L, and then B apostrophe S-H-U-V-C-H-A, and then capital L apostrophe T-Z-I-O-N.
You can do a Google search, it's right here.
Damn, they show up.
And there, the two of them are.
Yeah, it's different congregation, but probably the, for example, the Akhtus, this is in a bungalow colony with just a couple weeks in the summer, it's not like a full year, it's just for the people within the colony who are probably using that main building or something.
Okay.
I need to check on the Ridge Road, on the other ones, I'll check on all that, but it's, none of them are probably is some functioning.
Because that's a full-size home, the one on Ridge Road.
I'll check on that.
But that was going to lead me to my question for you, Rick. What, at what point, or how do we determine how much, how far is too far or close enough?
We might as well parlay into your whole segment, and then we'll go, we'll go.
Yeah, it is related to the substantial burden issue that I'll address. Let me first go for a couple of points with respect to the attorney letter. He's not here, but you can carry this forward, because I think we need some clarifications and other things I just wanted to comment on. He goes into detail in several instances with respect to the men's shul versus the women's shul, et cetera, and making these determinations that they need to be split, et cetera. I just want to make a comment that it's not going to be this board that is going to mandate that there be a gender-specific shul. There'll be those shuls, and if you want to use them in a gender-specific way, that's in accordance with your religious practices, that's fine, but as a governmental agency, this board cannot go ahead and sort of mandate or put an imprimatur on the fact of that there is going to be this discrimination of one type of shul versus another type of shul. It's more just a clarification that this board isn't taking that action and actually designating one as one gender and the other as the other gender, and that's part of the board's approval, right?
Understood.
But it's, it's helpful to be in here, I'm not saying it shouldn't be in here, it's helpful to be in here for the board to understand the practice.
Understood.
And understand everything.
Yep.
Secondly, in the bottom of page two, the, what appears to be the second-to-last sentence, but it's really an incomplete sentence, so if that could be, the last part of the sentence could be added, it says, "Instead, they must either walk to the nearest shul, which is located about 1.5 miles away at 230 Scunny Monk Road, period." So there needs to be or, and whatever was intended to be the alternative. So if that could be explained. Next is on page four, the last paragraph there, it starts on the surrounding neighborhood. It says, "The surrounding neighborhood is built out except for several parcels that are far too large for the religious needs of the congregation, and the owners are unwilling to subdivide their land." And this is meant to demonstrate that in fact there are no reasonable alternatives, I assume. But the board will need further details with respect to why this is too large for the religious needs of the congregation, such as how large are these parcels that you've looked at, and what is the proper size for the religious needs of your congregation, and why is it limited to that size? Also a need for a clarification in my view for the planning board is on page five, in that second paragraph, sixth line down, that starts on the side congregation, period. It says, "Split prayer services are not an option." If you or the attorney can explain why that's not an option, so that the board can go ahead and properly analyze part of that substantiality issue. Now, what I, I've been asked by the chairman to generally talk about this substantial burden test, like what does it mean practically? You have it in your code, clearly the phrase, I was part of drafting it, so I know, the phrase was taken purposely from the body of law dealing with RALUPA and First Amendment issues dealing with religious uses, that you can't place a substantial burden on the exercise of the religion of either a person or congregation or an institution. So that's why it was used, and it was intended to be used in that fashion, so that there would be some context for the board to use that. Substantial burden is not defined in the body of law that deals with this, either in the Religious Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, commonly known as RALUPA, or elsewhere in any case. There's no specific definition of substantial burden. It's meant, and that is purposeful in my opinion, the law does this from time to time, it's meant to keep the standard flexible, presumably so that it could be applied to a variety of circumstances without sort of caving it to a very small set of circumstances. And therefore, it's going to be largely fact-dependent, and so you're going to have to look at every application in an individual sense and say, what are all those facts and circumstances of this particular application, and what are they asking you to do, and what are you considering in somehow limiting what they're doing to determine whether or not that places a substantial burden? But again, there's, there's no specific definition. I will give you a couple of examples, although admittedly, they are not extremely helpful, but they're somewhat helpful. And I think you could probably make an analogy, now that I think of it, to, in the law, negligence, which a lot of people have heard about with respect, if you get into a car accident or some sort of negligence accident like that, or a negligent situation. The standard as to who it may be liable and who is not is based on what is known as the reasonable, used to be reasonable man, now reasonable person standard, right? That is, what would a reasonable person do under those circumstances? And if a reasonable person under those circumstances would have slowed down or would have sped up, et cetera, that's the gauge that that conduct will be judged. So that it's not something that's defined, it's defined by the circumstances and whatever entity is, whether it be a judge or a jury, is determining, is that reasonable? Would a reasonable person do that? That's what's going to determine it. So again, it's very fact-intensive, and I think you need to look at substantial burden in a similar fashion. What would be a substantial burden under these particular facts and circumstances? If you have very close circumstances from application to application, obviously you need to apply it in a, in a consistent manner, but simply because you determine that substantial, it's a substantial burden in this case and you have a waiver, doesn't mean that you're necessarily going to have a waiver in, under different circumstances. You may not have a waiver because there may not have been a substantial burden shown. One case dealt with looking for alternative areas. It's a famous Westchester Day school case, and the court held that when the religious exercise has no ready alternatives, or where the alternatives require substantial delay, uncertainty, and expense, a complete denial of the application might be indicative of a substantial burden. So if you're saying that you, you have to look a long way away, that could be a substantial burden. There was a, another case that I thought might help a little bit in this regard. It was actually cited, it's not a local case, it's a Seventh Circuit case, but a similar type of circumstance. This is out in the Seventh Circuit, which is in the middle of the country, but a lot of these federal cases are trying to define substantial burden in a similar fashion. And here, the city had created a substantial burden by requiring the church to search around for other parcels of land rather than rezoning property the church already owned. Additionally, it's not even necessary for the congregation to demonstrate that there is no other property within the village it can use to build the requisite facility. So they're not required, you know, if you require them to go ahead and sort of survey the area and say, well, look for better places, this court in particular had found, and Westchester Day is similar, that that might be a substantial burden on the exercise of their religion. To put it in context, on the, sort of the flip side, there is, there's some guidance out of the Justice Department that watches and enforces the RALUPA statute, so they're very familiar with it, and they have a good body of law with respect to this. And again, they didn't define substantial burden, but they say that a mere inconvenience to the person or religious institution is not sufficient in order to create a substantial burden. So simply because there's some inconvenience, that falls short of a substantial burden. Again, it's not very helpful, but it's somewhat helpful, that if what you're asking them to do might be a mere inconvenience, that will not be a substantial burden, it has to be something more than simply a mere inconvenience. How much more until you get to the substantial burden is going to depend upon the individual facts. So that's probably as much guidance as I can give you as to how to try to practically apply this rather nebulous test of what is a substantial burden. You have before you, I think it's in the other application, but it's a good example. There's some landscaping requirements, and the question is, if you don't otherwise deal with those landscaping, they're required to put in landscaping, and they say, no, I don't want to put in landscaping, it's hard for me, except if a good fact situation came up, that putting in landscaping is going to be a substantial burden on the exercise of their religion, right? Maybe if you said that the, to reduce a particular, a proffered structure for a shul, for instance, to say that you're going to reduce it by 10 square feet, it's hard for me, again, to envision that that would be a substantial burden on the exercise of their religion. So. So all of these things have to take into account. Taken another way, if in fact a certain religion needed a spire of a certain height as part of their religion, you say, no, I want it cut by 10 feet, that might present a substantial burden on the exercise of the religion. So it's very fact specific, so I think you need to listen to what is being proposed, see what, because we're dealing now with just the waivers from the bulk table, what would happen if you didn't give them that, or you didn't give them all of what they want? Because when you have a waiver, you could, they're asking for a complete waiver on some of these things, but you could also say, well, maybe if we don't waive this completely, it will be a substantial burden, but maybe if we, say, we'll waive it by 90%, that would not be a substantial burden, it'd be a mere inconvenience. So again, I think you have to, you know, sort of bore down into the details to make that determination. And I know that's, it's not the easiest thing, but...
No, I think, I think it was helpful, thank you, Rick. Maybe have any questions for Rick?
There's a, let me talk about just a couple of other things that are not related to the substantial burden. You have not completed CECA yet, what you had done is ask for this traffic study to be put forth, which was in essence part of an expanded EAF Part III analysis, so you still haven't finished with that yet, as I understand it, unless you feel comfortable with it. But at some point in time, when you think you have enough information, you will have to go through the EAF Part II that was previously provided to you, and then make a determination of significance. You will also need a public hearing for both the site plan and the ARB. And whenever that's ready, that will be up to you.
Okay. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about CECA, but I think we do have the pending question out there about the busses, that I think you're going to get back to us on the next submission, because that would dictate if we need further analysis, or if the board would feel comfortable with what we have. So, but I'm not, how does the board feel? Do we want to wait till we hear back from the applicant?
Stormwater also part of CECA?
What's up?
Stormwater also part of CECA? I think it is, right? Yeah. So I mean, we're putting a parking lot, the landbanks are not paved, they're impervious or impervious? They're meant to be impervious?
The bank would remain grass.
Yes. That helps with the stormwater.
Well, if we, that's the next step I wanted to get to, if, if, you know, you're at 35% coverage, I think is what we're saying.
Yes.
Yeah.
Before you go, I have a question on that 35% coverage, because on, on the Brockman depiction, or...
What is it?
From February 29th, there's, you talk about proposed additions, so were these proposed additions?
This is the frame of planning?
No, this is from February 29th.
From the back.
No, I think it's exterior.
Yeah, there's exterior proposed additions, and then it also says that the covered deck is going to be included, it's a covered deck to be converted into the dwelling, so that's...
They always add some conversion of the deck.
Correct.
Right, but on this side, it says proposed addition.
What?
On the first floor.
What's it say?
Proposed addition, proposed addition.
Does it say anything?
Yeah, it says proposed addition, and this says proposed addition.
This whole area is basically a backside up and front, and I think there is a deck here, I need to look in the site plan again, but this was discussed in the way that...
Because...
Well, it's fine.
My question is, if those are additions, is that taken into the lot coverage or not?
Depends on whether John had his son's, his plan correct.
Well, because I know that we're not going over it, but what we're seeing tonight for the future is a lot different than what's there right now.
Well, I guess the bigger question is, is the plans that we were given on February 29th, even though we don't quote-unquote have the new plans in front of us, is this still a valid set of plans? Or is this changed?
We'll verify that, but I think it is the same, and I don't think anything, this is the original, I resubmit it again, this plan is what was, I didn't, did any changes since then. I think the site plan reflects the same footprint, but we will clarify that.
Okay.
So the lot coverage, it's 10% required, and we're looking for 35%, and you're looking for a waiver on that, but we don't know if the 35% actually includes everything that's currently on the map? Is that what we're talking about?
That's what I'm questioning.
Well, it includes everything on my map.
Yeah.
Well, it does include everything that's in the development, I mean, that's what we're boiling down to.
Well, we just have to confirm that whatever this footprint is matches that.
We're talking about a couple feet, it's not like you're going to increase another 5%, but we'll clarify that.
No, it may not, but I just want to...
We have to get correlation between everything, we have to tie everything together.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Well, well, no, while we're talking about it, I mean, I have other questions, but we'll talk about this one right now. How does the board feel with 30, you know, with a 35% waiver with the information we have in front of us right now? You know, do we want to see the applicant sharpen his pencils and only...
Well, that's where the landbanks came in, right? I think the landbanks intended to reduce that, right?
That's part of the reasoning behind, behind, we're, we're pretty much at the minimum that we can have, and instantly the code, we need the 20-foot wide drive aisle, you know, we need the nine-by-18's parking spaces, so we're...
Right, so then if you're, rather than landbanks, there are pavers that are porous, you know, or...
I don't know if that meets your definition of, of development coverage.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's everything that's not grass, per se, but it's, we'll look at the definition.
Right, but then the problem becomes if the site is overcrowded, and the landbanks need to be brought up to snuff, now we're against the coverage mark again.
We'll be back to this, whatever the original.
And then there's...
Right now, everything is designed, including the landbank, that includes everything, so...
It's been earlier, section 42 about the park, or the buffering, or the, I mean, that's a valid point, because it's in a residential neighborhood. I know it's a religious use, it's not a commercial use, but it's more of a commercial use than religious use, so having buffer would be good.
Well, they have a wall that protects some of the rear area.
Well, it looks like the wall is higher.
The front isn't quite as strong and public.
As the applicant, we don't have any problems providing more, that's not an issue. We did our first go-through about it, we put trees and screening around, if we need to add more, we can...
Trees, screening, stormwater, smaller impervious area, sure, we can do a whole bunch of stuff.
Well, we have to realize that the applicant do.
Yeah, it's not...
I mean, but as far as additional screening, I think that the Waldman, we have the Waldman property up to the top, and then you have the...
So essentially, the wall's a cut wall, so...
Yeah.
If it comes to the rear, it's to be the maximum is 17, so you won't, you won't see the top of the cars starting probably from here in the back. So I think it's really this piece here, and the front here that you would see.
So the wall with the fence, and then the landscaping on top of that is...
We didn't have any on top of that, that's where we could, we could add on top of that.
Well, so the top of the wall is at 883, and the top of curb is at 875, so, all right.
What may make sense, just as a suggestion, is to have Jonathan look at for you potential areas where more screening and buffering can be done through landscaping on the project to meet the goals that you're talking about, and then he could suggest those, and then the board can discuss those, or the board could discuss it itself.
No, I, I think having Jonathan's input would be helpful, it's more of his forte, not the puns, but...
It also goes to, if you're considering landbanking where?
Right.
We chose this area, but you could landbank the front, like John was mentioning, and that would give you more of a buffer, and more of the parking lot hidden behind the building, so it's, there's a lot of moving parts.
Yeah, I think, I would suggest that if the board agrees that section 42, which is when you have a use adjacent to a residential district, whether that set of supplemental parking landscaping applies, you could just advise the applicant at this time that when they resubmit plans, you'd like them to comply with 31042 landscaping standards, as well as those that I had mentioned in my memo.
There's really two issues there. One is, this board, regardless of a specific requirement of the code, certainly can require under your plenary powers for site plan, say that you want additional screening, regardless of whether or not that's required under the code. So I think that's what needs to be looked at. I think with respect to whether or not that specific provision requires additional screening, that really needs to go to Gary, that's actually a, would be a substantial opinion and interpretation of the code, because it would be applied to any other religious use that's in a residential area, whether or not you need to apply these regulations for a buffer, or you don't. That still doesn't stop the board from asking for more when you think it's appropriate under the particular circumstances, but I think it's actually a significant issue that ought to be not tried to interpret by either me or Jonathan or the board, but ask Gary for an interpretation of that.
Understood.
Dennis, can you ask?
Dennis, would you be able to pen a memo to Gary for his, what was the word last month? Opi?
Opi.
We've cut down on our use of that.
All right, but let's talk about the landbanking in the parking spaces. My only concern with moving the landbanking, putting the parking in the rear and putting the landbanking in the front, while I know aesthetically it will look good, I'm thinking about snow removal. You're going to have a plow come in to that driveway, and where are we going to put it? Because he's going to want to push it straight to the back. And now, are we going to, are we going to kill three spots? Because we just got three feet of snow, and we put ourselves in a bad spot?
Well, the whole thing is a...
I just tried to...
There's an eight-foot wall down here.
We could do a combination, you could, you could landbank a portion of these, and landbank a portion of those, and it's...
I think that would look better, because I would hate to take away all that parking, or put all that parking in the rear, we get a really bad winter, and now they have no place, really, really is no place to pile that snow. It's either going to go straight back, or back into the corner where your handicap ramps are, and now we've taken away all the parking, and now everybody's on the street. So we've, actually, I think we would have created a worse situation, instead of bettering it, if we'd kind of 50/50'd it, take a couple spots from the rear, a couple spots from the front, and...
Yeah, now, we had, we had chosen seven spots, I don't know if that was the magic number in the transportation report or not, but you could certainly landbank a few more. We have seven chosen, we could landbank, you know, three here for that, take away these two and a third over here, or if you wanted to landbank maybe eight, you could do four and four, there's a lot of options.
We'll close it back to the impervious area coverage again, too. What is, what is the reduction in...
Well, each space, I think, is 162 square feet, so what is, each space would be half percent, maybe, off the top of my head?
Half percent, seven space, eight spots, there's 4%, so it's down to 30.
If, if you're going to bank the spaces, you have to leave them as potential coverage in the future, you can't, you can't get credit, you can't lower the development coverage waiver if they bank spaces, because then if the trigger happens and they have to build them, then they'll be in violation, they'll have to come back to the board and get the development coverage number upped.
We have to look at it as, if all these spaces are built out, then they would still be at 35%. Even though they potentially won't be built out, they'll just be there in, you know, in space, but...
They're held in reserve, and, and...
The coverage will be lower.
Only as long as they're not built, but when they're built, the coverage will go up to the amount shown.
You guys going to use, still use resident, the residential, okay? Because that would be another.
Yeah.
Another. All right, so I think this board right now, we need to come up with, or give the applicant some guidance, how many spaces we're willing, or we want to say they need to bank, or not at all? Do we want, or is the board going to go and say we want them to build up to 24 spaces? Or whatever.
Or I think there's a third, a third option, is, is we would seek a waiver on parking reduction, so that the development coverage would go down, the board granted a parking reduction, if I'm not mistaken, rather than landbanking.
It's, it's actually, I spoke to the upper, whatever, operating the shul, they feel that 16 spaces will be sufficient. Since we didn't have the space for it, we didn't ask for a waiver, but if that will be a better balance for the board to waive on the parking, and it will be a less waiver on the coverage, then we are okay with that.
There are a lot of reduction, reduction, but it's usually, it's different than certain areas, but I, I would think that the landbanking would accomplish what you want, in other words, you would be allowed to try to run the shul with that amount of parking. If it works, you go on, we're not looking to pave the world. If it doesn't work, then it doesn't have to come back to the board, it can be Gary that simply says that this has not met the criteria that was established, and it now needs to be paved. And it seems to me like the number that you select is abs, I don't think it's critical, because you will have in your conditions and your regula, in your resolution, a requirement that it be brought up to 24 if it's necessary. So I would, I would go for the full seven spaces as landbanked, if they believe that it can work with the remainder number, okay, as 17 spaces, I guess. So if they believe it, and they're saying they can work it with 16, so...
Will landbank your car again?
Yeah.
Well, I guess the lot coverage is then the bigger issue.
Right, so, but hold on, we got to, we got to get there, but we got to, we got to finish one point before we move to the next. So I, if it was me, I would ask, well, my opinion is, the first three spaces on the right when you come in, and the last, the last three spaces kind of in the back left corner, I guess, that would be behind the handicap spots, just because those are closest to abutting other people's properties. My two cents, how's the rest of the board feel?
So you said those two and the other?
Oops, sorry, so these three, and then these in the back.
So that's, so that's only six, no, so you'd...
Okay, so take four.
Well, I would, I would add one by the parking peninsula, or the landscape peninsula.
The one in the front when you first come in?
On the right, yeah. So you have the first three spaces, like you said, so you go three landbanked, two parking spaces, then you got the peninsula, you go another landbank, and then you go one, two, three, four parking spaces.
Okay, this one here.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
I could get on board with that. So he's saying, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 99, 100. Well, we don't need a motion, but we just need to make sure everybody is speaking the same language. All right, let's start the conversation on lot coverage, you. You kicked that ball.
I'm sorry, but it's a lot of coverage, it's three times what is permitted for the site area, without any real stormwater management, and it's in the middle of a residential neighborhood. I don't know how, how you work, how you work that? How do you work those numbers?
Well, we, we worked that by asking the applicant, is there any part of the facility that could be shrunk, that would not impact their operations? I hate to make it sound like a store.
Or is there 100% stormwater management system that, I mean, that's really what the major issue is, with impervious surfaces, that you're going to wash out your neighbor.
I don't think we, stormwater management, we are less than half an acre, this parcel.
Right, but you're 35% lot coverage.
Correct, and we have proposed catch basin and piping connecting into the existing
But that system was designed for a lot coverage with only ten percent. So you're taking basically two other, you're, you're overflowing the existing system by.
I don't know that. I don't know that.
The system out here, I would second its design. The only thing is this, they are providing additional coverage here, issue that's fashion dressing, some people ignore it. So the mitigation, probably if you're man on D1, I'm gonna make that something else, make that, uh, an area that has its nature in there perhaps, or go to the backyard someplace with roof leaders, bring them all down to base and grass next to that, the discharge overflow. That'll be more than most of the other lots have because they simply have free flow along and they provide, I think, they can provide a zero from that track area. But John, I have some calculations. It wouldn't, Q was equal to CIA very simply.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Full house, very simple one. So you can, you can give us something.
Yeah, what I was envisioning is some sort of either rain garden or small buyer retention area that we could plant.
Wouldn't you be collecting the rainwater then? Isn't that part of? The MICFA?
There is. From the roof actually will be collected, but not all the time.
Okay.
Only when we need to fill her up again, but it's not like every day.
Okay, so it's not a constant.
No, it's not a constant. No, it's like multiple times in the year.
I knew, I knew you had it collected. I just didn't know how often it had to be collected.
You gotta try it.
So if the applicant comes back with a little bit of a different storm management program, how do we still feel about the whole thirty-five percent coverage? Not silent.
I don't know. I'm trying not to talk too much.
Well, I mean, this is, this is, this is our chance. We, you know, we, we want the applicant. We don't wanna keep making the applicant come back because we keep coming up with different things. You know, we kinda wanna get the submission in and we still gotta go through ARB with the applicant. So, but I, I'd like for the next submission to come back to really have the concise comments of this board.
Well, I think we also need, need to understand what the total lot coverage is because I think the number's a little shy from what's really built.
Yeah, was that walkway, that new walkway that goes down that was in the thirty-five percent also? It was? I didn't see that in the original thing. Okay.
Yeah, that was an add-on, but it was at, the thirty, the thirty-five percent is probably thirty-four, whatever we round up. When that walkway was added, we didn't, we didn't exceed that. Rather than saying thirty-four point eight-six percent.
Okay.
It's even.
So to keep it, to keep the ball moving, I would say that the storm water management helps in additional landscaping, uh, helps. Um, the, the other, I have another item. The other item would be the lighting. There was a lighting map shown or photometrics. It's, and these little triangles on the plan are, are lights. I mean, we're lighting up the whole world out there.
Are there lights that would not come in?
Is there, are those zeros on the, on the end?
Yes, these all, these all zero out. It's either point one or zero.
And I think our code is what, point one candle?
There's an invention that started when I came out many, many years ago. And also there's no glare. That's the other thing. I have shield because even though you can't pick up the light, you know, you see flare across the light with flashing. So you don't wanna have that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I was gonna say that's approval conditions, like point one candle watts.
Zero point one foot candles in property line and no.
And night sky friendly. Is that what the, no glare?
And those will go off when?
Oh, yeah.
The shul is closed for the evening?
The outside lights? Well, has them? I don't know. Usually it's, uh, it's like on.
Twenty-four seven?
Usually. It's not twenty-four seven, only when it's dark, so.
Well, there, we, there's step lights too that come on and off when people are in the occupancy sensors. I mean, that would be, you don't need the light on.
That's a problem with Saturdays.
Occupancy sensors are a problem?
Yes, because if you're making that the lights should turn on on the Saturdays, even to the sensor, it's a problem.
You can also have a digital time clock.
They can have time clocks.
I mean, there's controls that we can add to that, right?
Well, would you concern, I, I don't think we have a problem with say security lighting on the building. I think it's the parking lot lights where.
Yeah, again, it's the.
We are proposing no parking lot.
Okay, so that's all.
These are all building mounted at the doors.
Shining out.
And shining down.
Down.
The wall pack with the.
Point zero.
Down. And the map that shows here, it shows the foot candles that go out. That doesn't exceed to the property line and then it conforms to point one.
Right.
It's still a residential area.
Yes.
From the, uh, from the light, but they were land banking the whole area back. This was fine. Now they did not land banking some stalls and back there. What I think about the light is, the light is, oh, in the back there. You don't wanna have less than point one foot candles in park. So trip over something that's. Uh, I said the parking garage is here, see, it's like one or two foot candles. That's wrong. And point one, point two, you can get, you have point three in those areas. That's wrong. But having a zero or cause you're maintaining out there in those spaces, I think it's a little bit wrong.
Well, it's an eight-foot retaining wall. So there's an opportunity for light on the wall towards the, the building if possible, right?
Yes. And if you had more light from the building, as long as you have shield on, shines out there, it's gonna hit the wall. So it's not a mess. So I think it'd be a problem for some.
Okay.
I, I think if, with the request for additional screening, I think that will take care of some of the lighting that would potentially spill onto the neighboring properties.
Those are my points. I'm, I'm checking out.
Just a question. Uh, the existing water surface, is that KJ border department right now?
That is the, I just had correspondence.
Woodbury Heights?
It's, um, it's a private water system. I believe it's owned by the village, but I don't recall what the name is. It's Woodbury Heights.
Think Woodbury Heights.
District or some, something that effect. So I've sent them correspondence confirming that they have adequate supply to provide.
Yeah, we'll, we'll need a letter from the village of Currys Joel, a will serve letter.
That's what, that's what we're working on.
I thought I saw in somebody's report too, we need to put the sewers. Here we have to confirm.
Yeah, Woodbury Sewer Response.
Village.
Village.
Woodbury. Have you gotten anything from that?
No.
That's all part of the.
Do you want me to approach sewer or?
Well, how do we typically, the applicant typically reaches out, right?
Yeah.
So yes. Anything, I'm just trying to go down the line, make sure we get everybody's thoughts, concerns. You good or more? Okay. Joe?
I'm, I'm very good.
On Dennis's report under the storm water management, um, he did say the applicant's engineer has advised they are still investigating the piping connections in this area. You're still investigating it?
Yeah, there's over here, um, I believe it's either a roof leader or a footing drain from the house that comes out over here in the corner. We're still trying to just finally determine where that actually goes.
Oh, I know. I did have something else and only because it's a little confusing. Again, going back to good old Google Maps. Um, this is named differently. This is the name that comes up. For this location. Do you know what that is or why that comes up?
Check on that. What is this?
This is, this is Google Maps and it comes up with this, without address and it gives the hours of being open from five-thirty to ten-thirty.
That's maybe someone's being just poor and, but I don't know.
Okay. No, that's why I'm asking because the, the, um, the narrative said, what, seven AM to ten PM? So I wanted to double check on those hours. It's still seven to ten.
Basically, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know what you mean by basically. So, um, when, I mean, the, the reason, I mean, the board is, does not go ahead and just try to determine what it thinks are the right number of hours for something to be open. Okay, that, they, they don't do it in that fashion. But it's important to know on certain applications, when the hours are going to be because the impacts may be different at different hours. So if you are saying that it's gonna be open at certain hours, that's gonna be in a condition in the resolution. It's gonna be restricted because otherwise the planning board may ask other questions and ask for other studies if it's going to be open for different hours. So if these are the hours you're comfortable with and the planning board is fine with that or with conditions with that, then those are gonna be the hours. But, okay?
Basically, we started that a couple of months ago. I will clarify everything again with the congregation and will submit everything updated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any else? Any? You're good? Okay. Anything else from the consultants? Ready to go on that table? Any other questions? You guys are good. Some homework. Um, we are gonna need with this, an ARB.
Yeah, so we will do, we will come back with everything in time.
Okay. And then we'll move forward with Zika and public hearing and all that other fun stuff. All right?
Can we get a rear view?
It's not changing anything there. I can have.
Because, well, I mean, this is a significant difference from what it is now and that's what it is now. So I would like to see what the back looks like.
No problem.
Thank you. All right, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is red.
Wow, we went on that long. We killed it, huh? Moving on. Believe it's Homeland. What happened to my. Wait, agenda. Homeland Towers. Discussing set public hearing date for site plan submitted for proposed wireless telecommunications facility to include a hundred ten-foot monopole with a two thousand five hundred and eighty-four square foot multi-carrier equipment compound at the base. Set property is located at eleven Abrams Road in Central Valley and is known as the village of Woodbury, tax map section two-two-six lot, uh, block one, lot thirty-eight. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Robert Codi Oso with the law firm of Snyder and Snyder on behalf of the applicants. G A U D I O S O. We did receive Mr. Muso's comments last Thursday. We have no problem with any of them. We should have those responses in shortly, including the additional visual renderings, the changes to the plans, um, some of the additional RF information, uh, some of the additional information on some of the alternative sites that was requested, as well as Mr. Lindsay's prior comments, including filing of the administrative wetlands permit at the building department.
Mr. Muso.
I'll try my luck with the microphone tonight. Um, Mike Muso from HDR for the record, working on behalf of the village. So, um, just a recap. I think you last saw me and the applicant here in July. Uh, the board had declared itself as Secra lead agency or the intent to be Secra lead agency. And, um, in the weeks that followed here, I, uh, we're continuing with our. Continuing with our technical review of the application. I did circulate a information request, an overview, which I, I hope everybody on the board had, uh, received. It was an email. I could just run through a couple of things quickly. Um, I do wanna point out that, um, I think the application is substantially complete at this point, but there are a number of. Based on our review and also some of the comments that we heard from the board in the July meeting. Um. Mr. Codi Oso has noted that he's working. Mr. Codi Oso noted that he's working on H2M's comment letter along with us. I think both sets of comments are gonna require some changes to the drawing set. Um, I looked at, um, I guess a couple of major items. One is in terms of visual and I think based on the situation of the proposed tower, uh, definitely would like to see some information on a stealth tree option that we've used before. Right now they're proposing a. Proposing a hundred ten-foot galvanized or conventional monopole. So that would be reflected on. And also some other information. Um, there was an alternate site analysis.
There you go.
There you go. You sound better.
There was an alternate site analysis that was provided by Homeland. We asked for some clarifications on that. Also asked them to evaluate, uh, possible use of transmission tower lines in the area. We've done some looking into, I don't think it's very promising. Number one, by location. Number two is that the Public Service Commission, uh, in the last ten years has not been very amenable to co-locating antennas on that. And it may not work from a technical perspective for Homeland or for Verizon in this case, it's a carrier. A few site plan issues from the drawings and also the additional information. One is on the emergency generator. We'll certainly put conditions into our tech memo about the testing and frequency of testing of that. Uh, there was specification provided on a drawing, but we want to see a little bit more on that. Uh, there's also some involved agencies. There's correspondence here, um, from, uh, New York State Parks, Orange County. We heard back from SHIP-O already and it was essentially a negative determination about an impact or, um, uh, potential effect to historic resources. None were found. And that actually matches up with what we had found early on going into the balloon test and we're looking at different locations, um, way back in April, if you remember when we did that. Um, I, they asked them for some due diligence information on the radio frequency report. I'm comfortable with the emissions report and I'll talk to that in my tech memo, but as far as the justification of the site, I would like to see a little bit more. I'm not sure if you had a chance to flip through that slide that was provided, but, um, one of the important things I like to look at is the viability to co-locate below one hundred ten feet. Uh, this is not a giant tower by the village's standards. Um, we have a hundred fifty or greater heights of towers. So this is a rather low line, one hundred ten foot with Verizon located near the top. My question is, is co-location below that indeed viable? So there's some questions, uh, that I've raised relevant to that. That also ties into structural and, um, I don't think anything more is needed at the moment, but we may have some recommendations based on a further review of what it may look like, conventional stealth tree and what the co-location potential is. So there is a bit bit for them to work on to supplement the June seminal and I look forward to receiving that when it comes in.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Muso?
I do.
Okay, same.
There's just one.
One question in fifty-two parts.
One question. Um, my, so there is the possibility with co-location that it could go from one-ten to one-fifty.
Well, there, there is a possibility in the future that there could be a height increase.
Okay.
Um, your code right now is written, um, encourages co-location on existing cell sites. Playing out the scenario, this is built at a hundred ten feet. An applicant will come in in the future and say, geez, this looks like a great place to co-locate. They should go below that as per your code and as per the FCC criteria also for a substantial change. If someone says, well, we'd love to go here, but ninety feet, eighty feet don't work for us, they could propose to go higher, but, uh, there would be a ten percent increase under the substantial change with FCC and this board would see a site plan application for that.
Okay, so my question is with our code saying that it has to be the.